Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock and I am going to call the city council meeting to order. Today is November ninth. Will you all stand with me to say the pledge of allegiance? Okay, roll call. I'll begin with Councilman Owen.
Present.
Councilman McGoffin.
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilman Burns.
Present.
Councilwoman Kestie.
Present.
Councilman Allen.
Present.
Thank you. Online with us, welcome. And Councilman Lavaca.
Present.
Okay, moving on to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion for approving the agenda.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Councilman Owen. I have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Owen. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. The consent agenda, items one through four, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilman Burns and seconded by Councilman Lavaca. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. And opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. Moving on to city administrative report. Good evening, Mr. Bush.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson and council. No report this evening.
All right, moving on to Councilman Owen. Do you have a report tonight?
I don't have a whole lot to say, but my neighbor at the corner of Ball and Ferry called me. And the home there, I had no idea it used to be a hospital here in Seeger-Woolley. It was in operation until 1929. He invited me and my wife to come over and tour the house, and I haven't done it yet, but I'm going to. But I was real excited. I was real excited about that because I had no idea it had no history to it at all. And then I'd like to thank the president of the... Yeah, that. But anyway, on Facebook, I've noticed these little skits of history, you know? And I think that's really good. And I see a lot of things that I didn't know. But anyway, I'd like to see her keep up with that. I think it's going to bring a lot of interest into the... to it, so that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. I hope you do take the opportunity to tour the house. It is absolutely gorgeous, the way they've restored it. And you can see where the operating room was at, so they know where that was at. So that's pretty cool. Okay, Councilman McGoffin?
Hi, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just said, well, one thank you to Katie in the engineering department. I called this past week about a stop sign being down in Ward One, and the next day it was fixed, and she was really friendly. I just think it's really nice to have that level of service in a city where you can call and the next day you see it fixed around the city. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Diamond.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Burns?
Just want to acknowledge I was contacted by Mr. Sapp as well and referred him to Councilman Owen since he was in his ward, and I thought that was some pretty neat history about that house as well.
Very cool. Yes. Councilwoman Kestie?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll get with you just a minute. Councilman Allen, I'm going to go to Councilman Lavaca.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I just wanted to thank our director of the Public Works, Mark Viberg. I called him today. I saw somebody who was doing some work outside on a road, and he was very attentive to it and went right to it, and it was very awesome. And it was a little bit of a safety concern, so it was really cool how he addressed it. And then Kelly, today, our director of finance, being able to just sit down and have a really good conversation about the budget and dig into it, and it was very helpful, and I really appreciate the time you gave. So, thank you. Since I don't have nothing else.
All right, thank you. And Councilman Allen, anything to report? All right, doesn't...
Could you hear me, Madam Mayor?
I can hear you now, yes.
Okay, nothing to report.
All right. Thank you, Glenn. So I just have a couple things. First off, our IT director went ahead and did some exploration as far as the participants of the senior centers in the disabled program that is offered by the county. And what they have found with the list is that there's about 729 of Seeger-Woolley, in the Seeger-Woolley School District, who are on the program, and 243 of those actually live in Seeger-Woolley. So we do have quite a few of our senior citizens taking advantage of the exemption, the tax exemption that's happening, and I thought that might be important to share with the council tonight, especially as you're making some rather tough decisions. And then I also wanted to extend congratulations to Councilwoman Kestie on her appointment to board president at the museum. You've done some fantastic things there in the past, and I'm sure you're going to do even some more remarkable things, so congratulations. Okay, moving on then, we will move on to public comments. So if there is anybody in the audience who would like to give public comment, please keep it to three minutes and give your name and your address, and I will open it up. Okay, seeing nobody coming forward, I will offer it to anybody who is online. Is there anybody who is online who would like to give public comment tonight? I do not see any mics going off or any hands going up, so we will close public comment and move on to public hearing. This is for the proposed 2023-2024 budget, ordinance 2025-22, and I believe this is you, Kelly.
Yes, thank you. So we've gone over the budget on several past meetings. Tonight is just the first read of the actual budget ordinance, so summarizing all of those numbers in that one big chart. We've included in a different format than in prior years, trying to increase the transparency of those numbers. So for each year and each fund, because we pass the budget on the fund level, you'll see the estimated beginning cash, our estimated revenues, and budgeted expenditures for 2023 and 2024. And we hope to bring this back for a second read at the next meeting on the 22nd of November.
All right. So is there anybody within the council chambers here who would like to give testimony regarding the budget? If so, again, keep it to three minutes, name and address. All right. Seeing none, again, I will open it up to anybody who may be online. And seeing nothing there, then I will open it up to the council so that they may ask questions or if they would like to have discussions. So I'll open up the council.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Lavaca.
I would just like to make a quick statement that might help people when they're reading through it, that I kind of learned today. So there's the actual, and then there's the appropriated. And the actual is a year-to-date, and that's where we'll see the 2021, 2022, 2022 appropriated, and 23 appropriated, 24 appropriated, how the differences in the amounts. And it could be a little bit confusing thinking, why is 2022 so much lower than 2024, and why are we spending this much more and that there? So to understand clearly, it's a year-to-date, and so when you're looking at that, count in that one quarter's missing from that. So that helps a lot. And then it looked to me, just to throw this out there, that it's very strategic in the planning to see how it'll also roll into 2024, of course, 2023, 2024, but planning far enough ahead to see how that goes through. So hopefully, if anybody that hears this has had a chance to crack into it and look it over and see that, those were some questions I had, and thank you again for explaining those.
May I make a clarification on that, Mayor? That part, when talking about the 2022 is year-to-date, that part's not in the ordinance, but in the detail, subsequent detail of the budget included in your packet. So there'll be a 2021 actuals column, a 2022 actuals column, which is year-to-date as of the beginning of November.
All right. Is there anybody else who has comment? All right, hearing none. Then we will close the public hearing. And are you looking for an action tonight?
No.
Okay. So we will move on then to number two, or, yes, let's see, proposed budget. Moving on to the unfinished business property tax budgeted levy, ordinance number 2024-22. This is the second read. And again, Kelly, thank you.
Yes. We've talked about property tax a number of times now, and at the last work session, we talked about bringing two options to this meeting. So we've attached two versions of the same resolution, or same ordinance, ordinance 2024-22. The first one is with property tax increase of 1% and the banked capacity from 2022. And the second option is just with the 1%, not including the banked capacity. We've included in front of you some additional information from last meeting, some questions and answers. I would like to point you to the back of that document, just to give you some context about what it would look like taking the 1% over the next five years versus not taking the 1% over the next five years. And there you can see that cumulative difference over five years really does have a significant impact to the city and our ability to remain financially solvent, and it's a difference of about $530,000 over five years. So that's on the back there. Also, I wanted to expand on some information we presented at the work session and at the request of the mayor to give a good perspective of what are recommended 2023 proposed changes. So at the very bottom of that sheet, we gave kind of the three scenarios. If we didn't take the 1% and didn't take the banked capacity, if we took just the 1%, but not the banked, and then the final one is what we recommend is taking the 1% and the banked capacity. With the three property values we gave as examples last time, so property values of $307,000, $447,000, and $624,000, we estimate, and again, these are estimates based on our best guess and information from the county, is that it would increase an individual property owner's annual tax between $8 and about $1,550 annually. And then you can see there monthly, that's less than a dollar, about a $1.30. Any questions on any of that information? I apologize that you'll be looking at it for the first time today, but it's just some summary of information we've provided at previous meetings.
Thank you, Kelly. Councilman Owen, I'm not sure...
I'm just going to, just to kind of a repeat, but I think, I don't think you need that 1% property tax to balance a budget. I still believe that's just a convenient, easy way to slip your hand into the property owner's pocket. If it was really necessary, I could go along with it, but I honestly don't think it's necessary, and it's not a lot of money. But it means a lot to some of these property owners that don't have any money. And maybe it's a dollar, maybe it's $2, I don't know, but it all hurts. There's a lot of people, including my age, that don't have, we don't have retirement, we don't have 401K because they didn't exist in our working years. All we have is social security, and we don't get those big raises every year. You might get 2%, but then your Medicare goes up and gobbles that right up. So I'm just speaking from my perspective and for the group of people in my age group. And, you know, you say, well, someone get a tax break. Well, you have to make anything above $30,000, $31,000, I don't know what it is, but I don't care if it's $40,000, that ain't a lot of money to live on. You couldn't do it, you wouldn't want to do it, and you wouldn't probably work on a job that paid $40,000 a year, because that's not a living wage anymore. So all I'm saying is, I can't see raising the property tax 1%. That money don't mean a lot to the city, but it means a lot to the taxpayer.
Okay.
That's all I have to say. I hope I don't have to repeat this again, but that's my feeling, that's my true feeling, and I'm sympathetic towards the taxpayer. If it's necessary, fine, but when it's not really necessary, I don't go along with it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilman Owen. Okay, Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I am actually, after looking into this on the other side of that spectrum, so I kind of look at it in the manner that it is just about $10 a month on aver, or $10,000 a year on average. So it's not an incredible amount, and after five years, it ends up being about $60, $65 a year more because of compound interest and if we increase it every year. So I think it would be time to actually consider starting this program to benefit the city in five years to have that 500 grand coming into the city. One of the big things that we have within our community, which is actually really awesome, is it's beautiful and we are increasing that beauty for the residents and visitors. We can't really do that if we don't have the funding to come in. So although we want to look at all demographics, we're looking at the impact of literally $10 on average per year, or up to $60 a year if it's passed every year consecutively for five years. And the outcome from this benefits the children, it benefits the parents, it benefits the visitors, it benefits everybody living here and those who want to come here to visit. So I think the benefits do play in quite a bit at the same time, and my recommendation would be to, after looking at it, I would even consider adding in the bank on this one since it is $10. If we don't, then it ends up being $7 a year, just like $7 a year.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilman Burns?
So if you'd asked me the first time I sat in this chair if I'd raise taxes, I probably would have told you no. But I like to be thoughtful when I make choices, and I like to look at the numbers, look at the facts, as Councilman Lavaca has stated. Look at the long-term change, the long-term difference that this makes to the city, and think about my child, my grandchild, living here, and what kind of city I want them to live in, what kind of place I want them to be able to call home. Do I want the city to be able to afford everything that it needs so that it can retain its fiscal solvency? And I believe that from the neglect from previous times where they had not raised these taxes for so long, we end up in a situation where we have little choice but to do this. It's not something I relish in doing, but I do find a deep interest in making sure that we can afford to provide the money that we need for the city, for the different departments, to make sure that the police, the fire, all the streets are getting repaired. There's so much that goes into this, and it snowballs so quickly. I've heard people argue that we shouldn't do the banked capacity because the previous council voted it down, but governments constantly do things that their predecessors didn't want to do. If we never changed anything, these three fantastic women sitting up here with us wouldn't be here, because I believe Councilman Kestie said she thought that the first female was elected to the city council in the 80s. So change is good sometimes, and it helps benefit us. It helps make it so that we have a larger perspective, a larger ability to take care of our city, to preserve the things that we care about. I don't want to see Seeger-Woolley turn into Seattle. I want us to be able to afford to keep the streets clean, to keep our officers and our ambulances on the road, and I think that this is very important to that. So I am willing to do the banked capacity and the 1%. It's not something that I relish in doing, but to be honest, I spent more than $1,543 on a salad from Hagen today. So I think I can skip my salad tomorrow and pay for the taxes, and I understand that there's a lot of people who find that to be a lot of money, and I get it, I'm really sorry, but I'm glad that there's programs with the county and the state that will help you and help make it so that it is a much lower amount than that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman McGoffin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I reflected on what Councilman Burns had said about the banked capacity, and I do kind of realize that if the previous council had wanted to not do it, they shouldn't have put it in the bank. And I know it feels like it was so soon, and that's why initially for me it felt like we shouldn't do it, because it felt like a reversal, that it should be saved for a year that it's really needed, and with inflation being what it is, I could see that being this year. But I wanted to really get back to what Councilman Owen has been talking about, is the necessity of it. And I just wanted to get some clarification from staff that, how much did we cut this year? From previous meetings, I understood that we made pretty significant cuts across the board. There was a lot of belt tightening, so I just want to speak to the necessity of this, you know, because that is what I'm hearing from Councilman Owen, is that, you know, if this is really needed, then we should consider it, but if it's not a necessity, you know, we shouldn't levy this on the taxpayers. Can you guys speak to that for a second?
So yeah, in the budget balancing process for 2023, it was over $500,000 that we removed from the preliminary budget, over $600,000 from the 2024 budget. Last week, at the work session, we shared with you some of the major things that we removed from the 23 and 24 budget, and then we also shared with you if the banked capacity and the 1% does not go through, the types of tough choices we're going to have to make, because the amount of money in addition that we have to find is substantial enough, and we've already trimmed a lot of things out of the budget. We're going to have to make some tough choices. And so there were some things on there, some vacant positions we have, that we would be talking about. Not all of them collectively, but one was a vacant police officer position that we currently have with Chief Tucker's retirement, just been holding off until we get through the budget process on that, to make sure that we've got some budget flexibility if we needed it, if this did not go through. It's one discussion. Another one would be the parks and stormwater position that is in budget but is unfilled, and there were a few others on that list as well, a few other potentials. I can't remember them all off the top of my head, but Kelly might remember a few more.
Those were the major items, and then specifically as well, the one police car replacement in each of the fiscal years.
Okay, thank you. So from my understanding, this is a necessity, and I would support it. I trust your professional opinion and review. I think you guys have done a great job presenting us that this is not necessarily a want, this is a need, and I think it's, you know, a responsibility as a council member to provide for the city, not just today, but for, you know, the city in 20 years. And this is a type of decision that if we do vote no, it doesn't just impact next year, it will impact every year. So I really appreciate the work you guys have put in, and Councilman Owen, I think this is a necessity at this point, and that's why I would vote for it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Nothing? Okay, Councilman Allen, I see you have your mic off. Did you want to speak to this? Councilman Allen, you turned your mic off?
Is it on now?
There you are, yes.
Okay, for the set, the last several years, it seems like the city property tax is like the Holy Grail. We're always pursuing it. We've stayed away from it for years and years. I think I heard one of the council people say it wasn't the big picture, but same thing like that. Usually, the big picture to politicians and organizations is, we're better at spending your money than you are. And I don't always find that to be the case. I don't think it is a totally necessary tax. I'd go along with rate changes on sewers, garbage, all that, you know? I mean, I, those are like user fees, and I think everybody's responsible, but I will not vote for any personally of the... But I will not vote for any personally of the property tax proposals. But thank you for your understanding. It just seems like there's been an incredible amount of energy spent on this the last few years, and I don't understand that, but I'm only one vote, Chuck's probably another. So anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Diamond?
I just had a quick question. So it was referenced, the parks and stormwater in additional person. Those are boots in the ground, but it was my understanding that those sorts of positions were covered by the fees imposed in utilities. Is that correct, or am I misled?
The stormwater position, it's parks and stormwater split. The stormwater utility does cover a portion of the position, I believe roughly half, but the other half is from the general fund. So we would be, this, not approving the 1% in the banked capacity would impact the general fund specifically. So we'd have to look for general fund savings. That may be a choice we decide to make or recommend, would be to look at the general fund savings portion of that position. We're looking initially at vacant positions, because it's just a lot easier to look at vacant positions than it is to look at positions with people and them delivering services. But if we had a, you know, even more significant situation, we'd have to go beyond that, and we still may need to. Not because expect the money to increase in this discussion at this point, but down the road, the downstream impacts are also something to consider if we continue to not look at growing our property tax revenues.
All right. Yes, Councilwoman Kestie?
Okay, let me try and find the words to articulate this. If we are going to do something like this and ask the constituents to pay more in taxes, I realize you're making cuts, but I don't want to have you guys come forward in asking for Fridays off or other services that we would be cutting to the people who are paying more. So I just really want to be conscious of that, and that's all I want to say.
All right.
If I may make one more comment?
Yes, go ahead.
So we would probably be taking in right now about $221,000 a year if we had started this about four years ago. That's a substantial amount. And that would impact the taxpayer at this time, probably about $45 a year roughly in an increase on their property taxes, $45. So the city taking in that $225,000, or whichever it is, pretty close to, that's a pretty healthy amount. And I don't think this year it'll make a difference with the police car or any of these extreme things that we might not get if we don't. I think looking into the four or five-year plan and seeing how this is going to impact this city is really what we're starting down a long road right now. This is a relatively small increase of about 42 right now and 29 if we bank it. But that's not going to do a bunch for a city of 35 million, but it will start a path down a road that'll provide this income in the future.
All right, thank you. So this is a second read, and council does have the option to make a motion if they so choose, or we can bring it back at the next council meeting.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2422 with 1% and banked capacity, setting the budget levy payable in 2023.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion to approve option number one, the ordinance 202422 with 1% and banked capacity, setting the budget levy payable in 2023. Any more discussion? Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I have two?
Mayor, it would probably be preferable to do a roll call vote on this one.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so Councilman Owen?
I'm opposed.
All right. Councilman McGoffin?
You.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Diamond?
No.
Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kestie?
No.
Councilman Allen?
No.
And Councilman Lavaca?
Yes.
Okay, so four to three opposing option one to approve both the 1% and the banked. There is a second option, do I have a motion? This option would be approving the 1%, but no banked capacity.
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
All right. Do I have a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second that motion.
All right. So I, option two, approval to approve ordinance 202422 with 1% no banked capacity, setting the budgeted levy payable in 2023. Any more discussion? Okay, going down the roll again, Councilman Owen?
I didn't really understand what you said. Is this 1%?
This would approve ordinance 202422 with 1%, but no banked capacity.
I'm opposed.
Okay. Councilman McGoffin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Yes.
Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilman Kessie?
Yes.
Councilman Lavaca?
Yes.
And Councilman Allen?
No.
All right. So option two, the 2024 ordinance, 1% increase, no banked capacity, has passed, five to two, with Councilman Owen and Councilman Allen being those who have opposed this. So, all right. Is there anything else that we need to cover on this?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Moving on to our second item for unfinished business, and that is amending the Seidra Woolley Municipal Code 5.04.030, license fees regulations related to the mobile vendors. Charlie?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson, and council. This item is brought back for a second read. We had discussion on it at the last work session, and, I'm sorry, at the last, I believe, regular council meeting, the council decided on October 26th to go ahead and approve a resolution that's attached to this particular ordinance that decrease the mobile vendor annual license fee from $1,000 to 75. But that can't actually take effect because it's tied to the ordinance that's before you. And at that time, the council was not comfortable taking action on this ordinance. I do have a mobile vendor, a food vendor, very interested in getting into the city, wants to start service on November 22nd. So I'm getting at least one call on this topic. And I believe the outstanding question at the last meeting had to do with the food vendor that is at the farmer's market, the shaved ice truck. And there was questions about if we implemented these code changes limiting folks to, who are food vendors on city streets, to 10-minute stops as they travel around the community, would it affect that shaved ice truck? It would not, because they follow under the permit of the actual farmer's market. So I ran that one down. If council has further questions, happy to assist. But at this time, we would appreciate action if the council so inclined.
Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Bush? Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the vending truck.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll second.
Thank you. Any more, well, didn't have any discussion. So all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Same sign? All right, we have passed, we amended the Seidra Woolley Municipal Code 5.04.030, the license fee regulations for the mobile vendors. Okay, good deal. Thank you, council. That was a long time in coming. I'm glad you did the hard work on that, and thank you, Charlie, for bringing that forward. All right, moving on to item number three of unfinished business, which is revising the City Council Governance Handbook, Resolution 110922. This is a second read, so we will be recommending approval and looking for action on this tonight. Mr. Bush?
Yes, I presented this item at the last council work session last week, and had some discussion with the council, walked through the document. I included a clean version, so it's a little bit easier to read in here. We will need to do some additional formatting work after action is taken. We did not want to start doing that just yet, because if we change some more stuff, some more things are going to move around, and then we'll have to manually fix those as well. We are looking as a part of that formatting work to automate some of this and bring it into the 21st century, so in the future it'll be easier to update. But with that, if council has any further questions, happy to assist.
Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you. If we pass this, when does it go into effect?
It's a resolution, so I believe, and I'll ask the city attorney just to verify, that it would go into effect pretty much as soon as it's signed.
So that would mean that the committees would switch over immediately?
We would recommend the committee switch over the first of the year, just because we've got to make new appointments and everything, so, yeah.
So there wouldn't, that sounds good. All right, thank you for the clarification.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Kestie, seconded by Councilman Burns, recommending the revision of the City Council Governance Handbook, Resolution 110922. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on then to new business, the repealing and replacing of the Seidra Woolley Municipal Code, Chapter 8.04, Refused Collection and Disposal System, Ordinance Number 202222. This is a first read. And Leo, we actually have you up for this. Do you want to do this, or Mr. Freiburger, are you going to handle this?
Well, Leo has worked closely with city attorney Nikki Thompson on it. Nikki may want to speak to it, first of all, and Leo and I can fill in any of the gaps or any questions.
That's perfect, thank you.
So Leo has worked closely with my office, specifically with Aaron in my office, on a redraft of the solid waste code. It has not been updated in quite some time, and there were things that Leo felt needed to be modernized or rewritten in order to better reflect the needs of the city of Seidra Woolley. And it is finally ready for you to review and consider. Leo is the subject matter expert here and can answer all of those technical questions for you. But otherwise, this is on for a first read, and we welcome any feedback.
All right. Are there any questions for Leo? Leo, did you want to speak to this at all? Is your mic on, Leo? Thank you.
Oh, sure. So basically, it was, I think the last time it was written was 1968, so we wanted to bring it up into the, at least the 20th century here. So all it was, was just a lot of cleanup, describing, more descriptions of how things are really working now. So recycling is part of the program now here in Washington State. So we described out recycling and how that works, and we're revamping. Of course, you know, the money part of things where we're going to do the billing and stuff, that's going to go into the master fee schedule. So it was just basically cleaning it up really well. There's nothing really too exciting about it, except for just a lot of cleanup. So that's, that's basically it. If you had any questions, I'm more than happy to answer, but easy. Oh, okay.
Well, thank you for the work that you did do on this, Leo. And also you, Nikki, thank you very much, yeah, doing the cleanup. Does council want to move on this, or are they wanting to wait till next session?
I was kind of wanting to move on it if we could.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
So I'll make a motion to repeal then replace the Seidra Woolley Municipal Code, Chapter 8.4, Refused Collection and Disposal System.
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond, to repeal and replace the Seidra Woolley Municipal Code, Chapter 804, the Refused Collection and Disposal System, Ordinance 202222. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. All right. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you again, Leo and Nikki, for the. Moving on to Chapter 8.5, littering, to the Seidra Woolley Municipal Code, Ordinance 202122.
I think this one is mine.
Okay, thank you, Nikki.
Sure. So the RCWs and most municipalities have provisions in their code that prohibit littering. There's typically a fairly wide variety of penalties, from civil penalties, infractions, all the way through criminal charges. We don't currently have littering in our code. This particular ordinance would add a chapter that would identify littering as both a nuisance and also include that range of penalties, depending on how serious the littering situation is. This actually came about because we had a situation where a landlord had evicted a tenant, and the landlord had placed the tenant's property in the right-of-way, which they're allowed to do under state law, but we didn't have any mechanism for addressing it. So in addition to your typical littering provisions, we also added in some language about what needs to happen if a landlord takes advantage of their right under state law to place property in the right-of-way. So you will find very typical littering provisions in this code, but also the addition of the provision related to what happens when a landlord places a tenant's property in the right-of-way. This is on for a first read. If you have any questions, I'm happy to address them.
Are there any questions for Nikki? Okay, seeing none?
Yes, Nikki?
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Allen?
Councilman Allen, I was a little confused by that. They do have a right to put it in the right-of-way, and the tenant has 24 hours to pick it up. And then I was kind of reading, and if he doesn't, or they don't, then the landlord has 48 hours to have it disposed at their cost. Is that how it works?
That is how it works. Because technically, under state law, they have two options. The landlord can either place it on the right-of-way, or it can store the property for the tenant. And so we've sort of worked, worked in some alternate solutions here.
If you're the landlord, that's not a very good alternative, is it?
Well, I suppose.
If it was your pocketbook, how would you feel?
Well, if I'm the landlord, I have an option, right? I can either place the property somewhere else in storage, or I can place it on the public right-of-way. So if I'm the landlord, you know, I can't say how I would choose to approach that or how I would feel about it.
Yeah, I mean, you're going to, if you store it, you're going to be paying over $100 a month, plus packing it down there and paying, and then having to dispose it. I don't know. I wish there was some easier, more fair way than having somebody get stiffed on rent for months and then have to dispose of their property that they don't deem worthy of keeping. So it's just kind of a, you know, it's the landlord getting screwed on all bases, you know? So anyway, I'm just curious about that.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Is there, is there legal ramifications for the landlord if he puts it out there and then he takes it and disposes of it in the dump? I mean, can the tenant come back and then, you know, file charges against the landlord?
So from my perspective, if you are giving the tenant notice, hey, you have 24 hours to remove your stuff, and the tenant then declines to do so, the tenant has essentially abandoned their property, right? And you don't have a property interest in abandoned property. So at that point, you know, we know it's abandoned property, and we know that it is the landlord that has placed it there. And so now we're going to say to the landlord, hey, you need to move this.
Okay, so there is legal precedence on the landlord then for if they want to throw it away or whatnot, or have it come picked up and disposed of, they're not going to have a lawsuit put on them?
There is case law, of course, regarding abandoned property and the fact that you don't have a property interest or a property right in abandoned property. And if you've provided that notice to the tenant, then, you know, they are objectively indicating their intent to abandon the property if they're not choosing to remove it.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Owen?
Yes, I have a question for you, Nikki. I live across the street from Wendy's, and I get a tremendous amount of stuff that ends up in my yard. up in my yard. I don't know who puts it there, but it's got windy, wrote on the cups and everything else, so who's responsible for that? Maybe, maybe somebody walked by and threw it, but when I get wind, I get a lot of that stuff that blows over on my yard, so I don't know how your ordinance would pertain to that.
So, typically, it's going to be the person doing the littering that is going to be fined for that. If it's a situation where perhaps their receptacles are overflowing, the Wendy's receptacles are overflowing, then that's something that, you know, we could address with Wendy's, if they're not emptying their receptacles in the way they're supposed to. But you'd, of course, need some evidence that they're not doing things the way they're supposed to.
Oh, well, it's not that hard for me to pick up, so I was just wondering, you know, about if they had any responsibility to take care of their trash, but, okay, thank you much.
Are there any more questions or comments for Nikki? All right, this is a first read, unless council wanted to act upon it. Seeing or hearing no action, we will have this back on the, on the November 22nd council meeting. Thank you, and thank you, Nikki. Moving on to our last item, that is utility rates, Ordinance 202622, 202722, and 202822. This also was a first read. Mr. Freiburger?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. So, this is actually the second touch for council on this, on the November 2nd study session. I presented this in some detail. The memorandum from that meeting is also attached as a part of this packet tonight. There are a couple minor changes that I'll highlight as I go through this. What's added is the three ordinances, which will actually enact that, which we would ask you to consider on the meeting on November the 22nd for adoption. We do have a public hearing scheduled for that evening as well. Tonight, this, the three ordinances cover three different, the three different utilities that we manage in Cedar Woolley. 2622 is for the sanitary sewer system, 202722 is for the solid waste utility, and 202822 is for the stormwater utility. I do have here tonight with us, again, Leo Jacobs, the Solid Waste Superintendent, who was quite instrumental in the proposals for that particular utility, so if you do have any specific questions, Leo is here and available to help with that. And I believe Katie Isaacson is also on, from Isaacson Associates. She prepared the sewer outlook study, which we talked about in some detail, both in the utility committee meeting that was on the 10th of, I mean, the 26th of October, and then the study session. She wasn't available for the study session, so I did ask her if she would kindly participate tonight for any questions she might have in detail on that. In terms of the changes, there are no changes in the sewer part of this at all from what we had prior, and for Katie's sake, if you do have any questions on that, I'd be glad to try to address them. And I just, there is a summary on the second page of the memorandum that has the overall fiscal estimated impact for the sewer utility, Fund 401, it's $181,297. That represents basically the 4% utility rate increase, which we recommended. As you will recall, we've had inflation this year, from June of '21 to June of '22, of about 9.5%, so this, this increase covers the inflation impacts. It's not near as much as it could be because of our being able to move things around within the fund to keep the costs down as much as possible. So, that's for that utility. For 425, the impact is $43,356. That also represents a 4% rate increase, which is discussed in the memo. Leo had prepared a pretty detailed rate study on this, which you had a copy of in the packet for the study session, and I've also recreated that in a simplified form as the last page of this particular document, which I will point out one change on in just a moment. And then the, the third utility affected is the solid, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm mixing up. 425 was stormwater, the $43,004. Then on Fund 412, the solid waste, that's where Leo's work came into play and the, and the rate study. That was $180,890. That actually represented an 8.1% on, increase on that utility. And again, as we discussed at the work session, we're funding the bulk of that, over 6% of that, with an increase to a specific unit item, and that was the recycle rate for the 32-gallon containers, which went up by $2.98 from, from 502 to $8. So, that's the, net impact is about $418,000, which overall, for all of the utilities' value is about 5.4%. That was a question we had at the work session, so I put that figure in here for you. So, any specific questions for Katie on the sewer utility that you would like her to discuss?
Are there any questions for Katie? Katie, welcome. Thank you for coming on tonight, taking time out of your evening. Go ahead, Councilman Lavaca.
I have a question. How many homes are we servicing in Cedar Woolley for the sewer?
That's a good question. I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Well, we, we actually do that, we figure these rates based on an equivalent residential unit, and it's a calculation based on the income that we receive divided by the number of, I mean, we, we kind of back it in by dividing that by the number of connections and stuff. So, yeah, that's a hard one to pull at. I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 4,000. Now, you're asking me something that Kelly's presence would have been good for. I can provide that number for you for the next meeting, and I'll be glad to do that.
All right, anyone else? Councilman Owen?
No, I, I had, I was just going to ask Leo where my figures are that I asked for. I haven't heard anything back. I'd love to have those, so the council can, can view them, you know, and back up what I'm, I'm talking about. It's a, it's a wasted service, and it costs the city money.
So, Councilmember Owen, I probably could better answer that. As we discussed in the work session, we will prepare that for you. It's not really under consideration for this particular budget, because we look at the utility as an overall utility. Pulling out an individual item of that is, is difficult at best. We have raised or recommended a raise in the recycle rates, which is going to change the, or change the paradigm on that a fair amount for the comparison that you're asking us to do. The comparison that was done in the last two years on that, that Doug had prepared for us, really showed a pretty big imbalance on two parts of that utility, one being the roll-offs, and the second one being on the recycle part of that. And adjusting this, as we're proposing to do, is going to bring that partially back into kilter. There's, there's going to be another increase recommended for 2024 for recycle, which will bring it even closer. But we will do that comparison for you in the next couple of months. As Charlie mentioned last time, we've been pretty busy just working on the particular items of this, and that was something we really didn't have the staff time to deal.
We've asked, I've been asking for that for over a year, and for some reason or another, they just, they're dragging their feet, and don't, don't get the figures to me.
Well, we've had a finance director change, which has been a big part of that.
And I know it's substantial.
And a city manager change, which has been a big part of it, too, so I can't answer you any better than that, Chuck.
Yeah, that's fine.
But we've had personnel things to do.
That's fine. I know recycle was fine before this curbside service started. I worked down there. I knew the people that done their recycling. They're very faithful. They come down every Saturday and brought their recycle, and they're very, very courteous and particular where they put everything.
Okay.
I, I think it's, I think it's good. I think recycling is good, but there's nothing to recycle anymore. Very little you can put in recycle, just paper, milk jugs, and a few tin cans, and that's it.
Well, it's in the neighborhood of 700 tons a year that we recycle, that, and this is something that's important to understand in the mix of what we do. Basically, that's still waste that we have to handle, so if it's not handled as recycling, which is lighter, then it goes into the solid waste stream, too. We still have to dispose of it and pay the tipping fees, which, which they're getting closer, but they're not quite at par yet for recycle as opposed to solid waste.
I know, there's going to be a cost any way you look at it.
It is a cost, and that's why I say it's a difficult comparison for us to do, because we have a certain number of people to handle the, the tons of solid waste we have. It really, if we, if we today just said we're no longer going to do curbside recycle, could I tell you that, well, we're going to drop a driver and a truck? I couldn't do that, because that's not the way the utility works. Those guys pick up recycle one day a week, there's another four days that we can't say, well, you guys can come to work four days a week, not five. It, it just doesn't work like that.
I only put mine out once a month, and I still got room in my can, and...
I know.
I, I don't care. I, I'm just, I'm just thinking about dollars.
Understand that that's an important consideration.
You know, we sub property tax out of these folks, but I don't want to take, take money we get and shove it in a rat hole, and it's gone. You guys know more than I do about this stuff, but I can assure you, I'm not stupid, and I know that we're wasting a lot of money on, on a, on a service. It's just not profitable. It's costing a lot of money. I don't know how much, but Leo will get me those figures, I'm sure.
All right, thank you, Councilman Owen.
Thank you.
And that, that information will be coming to you. It will. We'll get it to you.
So, the one particular change that I wanted to point out in the rate adjustments, which is the last page of the memorandum on this subject, I've got a summary that says Fund 412 Solid Waste, proposed 2324 rate adjustments. In, in Leo's preliminary version, which you saw in the second, that did not include a residential rate for a 20-gallon toter, because he was actually proposing that we delete that service. But the way our, the way our utility is structured, that would have caused a problem with our low-income side of things. This actually was brought up to my mind in a conversation with Councilman Owen, and so I looked at that, and it was going to be problematic to try to do that in the short term. The reason for the look at that, deleting the 20-gallon can, is that's a trend in the industry right now. Mount Vernon, in fact, is eliminating theirs in their current go-around, is because it costs, basically, as you could probably understand, about as much to service a 20-gallon can as it does a 32-gallon can. So, that's, that's the trend on that, and we do have quite a few of those services. So, to just try to do that, kind of on short notice, didn't think that was proper to do that. We have added that back in. There's a line in there for the 20-gallon toter, which calculates for the low income, as all the other low incomes do, as 80% of the base rate. There is an increase on that particular 20-gallon toter of about a dollar and a quarter from the previous. It's a little higher than some of the other increases, but again, we do want to move towards getting to where those particular units pay for themselves, and so we're looking at, over a four- or five-year period, assuming we don't eliminate the 20s sooner than that, that we would get that up to, it's roughly a parity with a 32-gallon can with an every-other-week pickup, which is something we, Leo had also proposed, but we didn't actually put it in, because it was going to take a little more time to get that to do it. This will eventually get us to the point where they're at parity, and then it's a choice for the customer, do I just want to get a bigger container that's picked up every other week, or stay with a 20? So, that's the one change that I wanted to point out to you, and everything else is the same in terms of the rate structure that we discussed on the second. So, Leo, did I miss anything that you would like to bring forward?
So, you did it very well. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, Councilman Diamond?
So, just for the record, because I know we discussed this at the Utilities Committee meeting, but can you confirm the fact that we would, it's actually required by the city to have recycling, that we don't have the option to throw it out for taxpayers to, or city residents to, to make that choice? It is required for the city to have that?
That's my understanding, that it is required, and that's based on a statement that the finance director made the last time. I didn't go back personally and verify that, but that was, that was her.
And if we don't handle that ourselves, it has to be handled by an entity such as Waste Management, who then, we have no control over how much they raise their rates, and those rates provided by Waste Management in the past and on record are above and beyond what's being proposed at this time. Is that correct?
That is correct, and in fact, in the memo from the second, there was a comparison of at least the recycle rate among the various entities. Thought that got translated into this version. But yes, it's actually substantially higher than the proposed rate that we are, are doing here. It does vary by agency. They have different rates for the various cities and the county folks, they do, but it is up in the $12 to $13 a can rate as opposed to the eight that we're proposing.
Okay.
So, yes, assuming that that's true, that, that our customers, if we didn't offer the service, would have to pay for that through another agency, their costs would go up significantly, is what I understand.
I just wanted to confirm that for the record, so there's, that it has been discussed, the possibility of whether or not this was an option for homeowners and residents to opt in or out of it, that it is not an option to do that at this point, and that if we, we can't, as a city, take the thing completely away, it does have to be serviced by somebody else, and at this point, an outside service is more costly than the city's providing the service?
Right, and I'll verify that for the public hearing, by the way.
Okay, perfect.
I'll just make sure on that, since the finance director's not here, and it was, it was her statement on that.
Great. Thank you, Mark.
Okay.
Go ahead, Councilman Lavaca.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, if we can see an RCW or WAC on that code, just to be sure, I, I believe you're absolutely right. It is, it was passed down through, through the Senate a long time ago, but it would be nice to know that for sure. So, a big part of the cost has to do with the gas of the truck. Is that correct, when they're going around picking up these items? That's, are we able, like you were saying, the 20-gallon can compared to the 68-gallon? 68-gallon, would somebody be able to do a monthly service like Chuck Owens does, and get on a cycle like that, and actually save a substantial amount for that, that person? And if that's so, is there a way that we can utilize the, the website to put on a cost savings idea, or something that where people can save money with heating, by better insulation, maybe, or, you know, with your garbage, by doing a bigger can, or, you know, various ways, and then show them how they can save money with the city? I think if I do, if I believe this right, or seeing this right, it'll be anywhere from like a $7.5 to a $9 increase per, on average, per person per month with this increase-ish?
You know, I'd have to look in detail at that. Since there are so many different rates, it's hard to make that.
Yeah, I can imagine. I can imagine.
Yeah. I will say one other thing, too, before I forget about it, and Leo mentioned this at the meeting on the second. The state is not getting less rigid on this. They're getting more so. We actually expect that they're going to mandate that we take on green waste, waste, and, and kitchen waste as a requirement in the future, so, you know, it's, it's hard for me to imagine with the, with the political situation in Washington that's getting better. I could see it getting much worse for us. We'll monitor that and keep an eye on it. Thank you.
Mark, can I jump in really quick and provide you with an RCW?
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So, if you look up RCW 70A.205.045, that RCW talks about comprehensive solid waste plans, and in subsection seven, it... plans, and in subsection seven, it talks about waste reduction and recycling elements, and it says that it shall include the following. Source separation strategies, including programs for the collection of source-separated materials from residences in urban and rural areas. In urban areas, these programs shall include collection of source-separated recyclable materials from single and multifamily residences, unless the department approves an alternate program, according to the criteria in the planning guidelines. So I think the reality is, is that recycling has to stay in some format.
Could we then do it down at the recycle center, like Chuck Owens? I mean, wouldn't we be able to have, like, bring your recycling to the center? Or would that be putting too much, I guess, on the residents to ask them for making sure that they take that down, or have the option?
Leo, do you have an answer to that? Thank you, Nikki, for looking that up.
Yes. So, yes, there is options for people to bring it down. We already have our facility open. I'd like to, if you don't mind, I'd address that, your every other week or some of that other, that's what I was going to, that's what I'm trying to address with the rate study, is I'm trying to get those rates so we can help the low income and, you know, the lower, the less fortunate people that can't really afford those things. So I am coming up with programs. It's just right now, it was a little quick, because I'm putting the rate study in amongst changing, repealing the ordinance, and I've been quite busy, unfortunately, but so I do want to do every other week services, and I do think that there's an opportunity to do like a once-a-month service for people like Chuck like that. But we have to make sure that we get the rates structured correctly, so we're not losing money on any certain thing. So that'll be another task I'll do after this budget cycle, so I'll try to have it for 2024 and get it all sorted out. If you don't mind, one other thing, too. Mark mentioned about the green waste. I did get actual, the official date for that, and it is going to be January of 2027. Everybody will be required in the city to have a green waste or organics container. Now, I'm going to have to come up with some, you know, if I'm lucky to stay here still, I'll have to come up with some rates with that, and we can do it in all sorts of forms, like every other week, because we do it weekly now, or we could do it once a month. We'll come up with a program, so we're not stuck with everybody paying $15 a month, especially if they can't afford it, so, if that makes sense.
That one would be off topic 2027, but wouldn't people have the opportunity to compost their own waste?
We're still working through that. I was just hit with this yesterday at our SWAC meeting, so then I fired off a bunch of questions to Ecology today. I was like, what, what, why, why? And anyway, so I will get some more of that information, and I know it's a little ways away, but the planning part of me says, you know, let's get some stuff set up so we can address that topic when it comes up. But just did that.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Leo while he's here at the mic?
Not necessarily a question, but I was just scanning the internet. It looks like Senate Bill 5022 passed in 2021 that has to do with recycling. I haven't found the part yet that actually goes to the RCW that they have changed, but it looks like they are going to be requiring recycling for quite a few things, judging from my quick scan.
Yes.
I was under the impression, a few months ago, there was a packet about waste, solid waste, and we talked about landfills that were possibly, you know, looking at those options. It was a big pack, it was a thick packet, and so, that's probably a year ago. But in there, it was talking about campaigning the reduction of solid waste, whether it's at businesses or at homes, but community programs to campaign for reduction of waste. And that was moving toward a requirement for a community. Is something like that happening here?
Yes, they're pushing all sorts of different reduction acts, and they're all staged to happen at different times, and I am aware of those, and a lot of that doesn't really have to do with us, particularly in the utility. Some of that is more action at the state level, where they're going to force people to identify what their product, or how their product can be recycled, so the manufacturers will be the ones stuck with a lot of this, which is ultimately the consumer, but the manufacturers will have to figure out how to recycle, you know, paper, for instance, like, how are you going to recycle that back? Also, styrofoam is going to be outlawed in 2023, I believe, so they're slowly taking this stuff away from us. And I think you know now that if you go in and ask a restaurant or something like that, you're supposed to request the plastic utensils now. They don't outright give it to you. That's part of the bill that's coming up, so they'll start getting stricter and stricter about making that full-fledged rule. You know, eventually, there'll be a fine or something coming up. There's all sorts of little goodies in there that I have to pull out, try to figure out.
Someone handing out bamboo, bamboo utensils.
Oh, bamboo, wow. We'll be eating with paper forks here pretty soon and stuff, so, back to hands, yeah. Didn't mean to get off topic there, but I wanted to kind of give you some overview.
All right. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Chuck?
I just want to tell Leo.
More on that recycling?
I worked for Leo about eight years, and he's a very, very good guy to work for. He tries to do a good job. I know he's got a tough job, but I'm not trying to giggy Leo. I'm just trying to be honest, and you know as well as I do that recycles are losing battle, and it ain't going to get any better. But anyway, you do a good job, and I appreciate you, and Mark, too, and it's nothing personal. It's just I'm trying to do my job.
Fully understand that.
Okay, thank you very much. So this will be brought back to us at the next council meeting on Tuesday, the 22nd.
With a public hearing.
Right. So is there anything else, Mark, that you wanted to share, or is that it for tonight?
I think that's it for tonight.
Okay.
And just to reemphasize, since Leo is here, part of the reason he is as busy as he is, is that we are at the breakpoint with his utility. We've had enough growth. Since 2019, we've added about 350 services, to where that's half of a route by itself. And when we added the last employee in 2015, that was when we added the recycle truck and an additional employee. That banked us some capacity when we did that, but we've used all of that up, and we're now to where Leo is literally driving trucks nearly every day of the week, and has almost no time to manage the other parts of his job. He does that in his sleep, I guess, and does a good job of it that way, but, so it is important to understand that, and that's baked into this increase that we have there is to add that new employee for 2023.
All right, thank you. And Leo, I do want to thank you again for being here, because I do hear the trucks out there super early in the morning, which means you get up super early, and it's late right now, so thank you for joining us tonight and answering questions. Okay, so this will be coming back to you, and as I mentioned, the next meeting is going to be, it says here the 15th, but that is correct, that's the Planning Commission meeting. I don't know why that's on here. So next Tuesday is the Planning Commission meeting, and the following Tuesday, on the 22nd, because it is Thanksgiving weekend, we do meet on a Tuesday, and it'll be at 6 o'clock here in the council chambers. I do want to make one comment before we close, because I always appreciate the information that comes along, and I see Chief Wagner, that it looks like in August of this year, there were 355 calls, and you stated that's the busiest month in history for the Cedar Woolley Fire Department.
Yes, ma'am. Over the last years, I think my first couple of years here, we were just excited to make one a day and hit 365, and now we're almost doing that in a month, so. And if you look back, I think as Councilman Lavaca pointed out a few months ago, I think we're at 80-some percent increase over the last 12 or 13 years, so we're continuing to rise and expect more and more from these folks with less and less staffing, and so we're doing it, but at the benefit of great people like Skylar and Megan here in the audience, and the phenomenal job that they're doing with this academy that's going on over here, and special thanks to these one-time ARPA funds that have helped us out with those recruit academies.
I also want to point out that I appreciate the graphs that you provide as well. It does give a lot of information, and it tells, it's very telling about what you are doing, what your department is having to have to do throughout the month. So thank you again for doing that. All right, that is it. Unless there's anything for the good of the order, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.